All right, good evening, everyone. This is the March 9th, 2020, of Westminster City Council. At this time, I would ask each of you to join us, please, in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the first place.
All right, Ms. Parker, take the roll, please.
Atchison.
Here.
Demott.
Here.
Sykes.
Here.
Seymour.
Here.
Scully.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bowles.
Here.
All right, members of council, you have before you item 3A, the minutes of the February 24th meeting. Mr. Demott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the City Council to approve the minutes of the February 24th, 2020 meeting.
Ms. Sykes? I have a motion at second. All those in favor, if they signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is a couple of presentation points we have. We'll start with Counselor Smith on the Persian New Year proclamation.
May I have the person or persons representing in the Persian New Year proclamation? Join me? What's your name? Would you like to say anything about Persian New Year?
Ah, sure. The Persian New Year. Hello, everyone. My name is Asher. I'm joining. Thank you so much, Captain Smith. Thanks so much. Nourus, the Persian New Year. This year, it's March 1st. At this time of the year, we all set intentions for joy, good energy, friendship, enlightenment, love environment, and all that's good in life. So, are you welcome?
Well, we, the proclamations. Whereas citizens of Westminster, Colorado, recognize the celebration of the Nourus, marking the Persian New Year, and whereas the cultural celebration of the Nourus.
Nourus.
Nourus, thank you, promotes inclusivity and social environmental justice, as it reminds all people who celebrate to speak, act, and do positive deeds for their community, contributing to the world regardless of ethnicity, ideology, or lifestyle. Whereas on March 19th, 2020, the city of Westminster will join the Iranian-American community in celebration of Nourus, marking new beginnings for people as nature renews itself and all set intentions for love, health, abundance, beauty, reflection, growth, and enlightenment, and connect the Iranian community and the community at large. Now, therefore, I, Herb Atchison, mayor of the city of Westminster, Colorado, and behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim March 19th, 2020, a Nourus date. And the city of Westminster call upon all citizens and civic organizations to join me in recognizing this momentous occasion of Persian New Year.
Yeah, our next group of presentations will be to some of the employees who've been good enough to hang around with us for a few years. So, we have presentations tonight for 20, 25, 30, and 35 years of service. So, Mr. Seymour, could you start us off, please?
If I could get Kent Riegler and his family?
Yay! Look at all this. Kent, would you introduce your guests, please?
Sure thing. This is my wife, Mary Beth, holding Elizabeth, our oldest granddaughter, my daughter Katie, Maggie, our younger granddaughter, both Katie's daughters. Glad to be here.
She's smitten by her grandpa. You can tell. Big smile. Let me introduce Kent for his 20 years of service to the city. He joined the city in March 2000 as a senior engineer in the Water Resources and Treatment Division, now the Utilities and Engineering Division. He manages planning, design, and construction contracts for capital improvements to the city's four water and wastewater treatment facilities and the collection distribution system infrastructure. In his 20 years with the city, Kent has managed projects totaling over $190 million, including the largest single capital project undertaken to date by the city, the $45 million upgrading expansion of the Big Dry Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility in 2005 to 2009. Yeah, that was a big one. He was also managed the design and construction of the Northwest Water Treatment Facility, including its later expansion, the expansion of the reclaimed water treatment facility, storage tank and pump station, and the design and construction of the soon-to-be-completed solid dewatering facility at the Big Dry Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility. That's a mouthful. It's a big one, too. We got to see that. Kent is currently managing the design of the $32 million project to improve Big Dry Creek Wastewater Interceptor System. Kent was born and raised in central Pennsylvania and received his BS in Environmental Engineering from Pennsylvania State University after working as a consultant for 11 years and as an assistant manager for Countrywide Water Wastewater Utility for seven years. Kent moved to Colorado in 1998 with his wife of 38 years, Mary Beth, his two children, Robert, 36, and Katie, 35. Robert, he's throwing your age out there just like that, yeah.
That's a typo.
She'll get you for that.
At least he didn't tell mine.
Yeah, well, there are certain things you can't disclose. Robert is currently working in the mission field in Sierra Leone. Sorry, Robert is currently working in the mission field in Sierra Leone, Africa. Well, not currently, but... Well, you're here now, but... Oh, Robert is there in Sierra Leone. Thank you. And Katie is a detective with the Aurora PD. Besides his work, Kent enjoys spending time with his two granddaughters, obviously, playing golf, baking donuts at his church every Sunday, 68, 80 dozen each week. What's the address? And exploring the great west and following everything Penn State. So, we want to congratulate Kent for his 20 years and present him with this plaque and his service pin. Congratulations very much.
Could you bring them to every meeting?
We can just leave them. Whoops, your foot's gone.
Smile.
And could I have Shailene Hiller and family come up? How are you today?
One, Andrew, is your co-chair?
Angie and Chris standing up for you. All right. Shailene was hired in 2000 as a horticultural specialist and enjoys working in the green industry. Shailene is proud to say that Westminster has won awards over the years for her gardens, Walnut Creek Golf Preserve winning Showcase Demonstration Garden from the Planet Select and Legacy Ridge Golf Course winning Habitat Hero for Audubon Rockies. Shailene graduated from Carls State University in landscape horticulture with a concentration in landscape design and construction. She enjoyed keeping close ties with CSU through Plant Select, Colorado Nursery and Greenhouse Association, the CSU Extension, professional and native plant master from these organizations, and is currently an industry representative on the CSU Annual and Perennial Trial Gardens. She has volunteered with Urban Prairie Project, the Butterfly Pavilion, Monarch Larve Monitoring Project, whoosh, and has registered her gardens with Monarch Watch. Shailene is currently helping the water conservation and sustainability committees in the city. She enjoys spending time with her family and has a 16-year-old son who won first place in Jefferson County and third place in state in 4H... Oh, in 4H archery recurve? Recurve? Oh, recurve bows, okay. Traditional, and will be competing in the nationals in June. So, a little busy traveling? Well, thank you very much for all you did for our city. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
How are you doing?
Good, sir. How are you?
Good. So, this is Bill's wife, Susan. So, we have a couple of things for Bill. First of all, Susan, if you don't mind, I'll hand you the big one. This one. You might get it later, but not yet. So, Bill came to the city on February 27th, 1995, as a maintenance worker in the Building Operations and Maintenance Division of the General Services Department. In 1998, Bill was promoted to building repair worker and then transferred in 2003 to the Public Works and Utilities Department, Utilities Operation Division, as a meter repair worker. Bill stayed in Public Works and was promoted to a senior maintenance worker on the field operations crew. In 2013, when the wastewater cleaning and TVing was brought back in-house, Bill transferred to learn the wastewater side of the utility. In 2014, he was promoted to Utility Technician Utility Locator. In 2016, Bill took a job as a GIS technician with the Infrastructure Asset Management Group. Bill was part of the team that won the CMO Choice Award for the Silo Pump Station Project, which included repairing and rebuilding the pump station. Over his career with the city of Westminster, Bill has been a part of many teams in action, Extra Miles Award. Bill is a certified water professional, which means he currently holds Water Distribution III and Wastewater Collection III certifications. Now, there's a part in this next piece that I've gotten a little worried about because half the council is signing up to come to your house. Perfect. And then we have a question on how you got all these. So, Bill enjoys traveling with his wife, Susan, and spending time with his two grandson. He also enjoys hiking, snow skiing, scuba diving. This is the interesting part. Bill probably has the largest private hot sauce collection in Colorado with over 2,000 unopened bottles adorning his basement walls and his self-proclaimed Dungeon of Fire. We have a question. If they're unopened, how do you know what you got?
Big spreadsheet.
Big spreadsheet. And you tried all of these at one time or another?
There's a lot of open ones upstairs.
Oh, so the open ones are upstairs? Okay. Rich, he's got open ones.
I'm on my way.
Okay.
Break for the next meeting.
Okay, good. So, as history of Colorado and here with Westminster, we try to honor, at least at some point during these extended careers we have here, and thanks to it for letting us keep him around for a while, for every year of service on their 25th anniversary, we give them a check, which Susan has already attempted to appropriate, of $100 for each year of service. So, and Bill, congratulations. Thank you very much for your time and service to the city. Susan, thank you for the long...
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome.
Your time. How you doing? My wife.
Terry.
Do you want to introduce them?
Sure. This is my wife, I'm 25 years, Terry, my son Jake, and my daughter Hannah.
Welcome. Before I read this, was there anything you'd like to say after your 30 years? It went by fast. That's good. Hopefully, you've been having a good time. Yeah.
So, Bob Bellich started in the fire service in 1988 as a volunteer firefighter with Westminster.
He's going to be one of the last ones that started as volunteer, I imagine, starting to cycle out?
Well, we were cycling out. In 1990, he hired as a career firefighter and held that rank for 18 years. Bob's current position with the fire department is engineer. He was one of the original members of the juvenile fire starter team, a member of the dive team for 13 years, and has received two lifesaving awards. Bob and Terry have been married for 25 years. They have a son Jake and a daughter Hannah, and Bob enjoys spending time with his family, hiking, fishing, and hunting, and traveling.
So, you'll find your plaque in your pen, and we thank you for your service.
Thank you.
That's your job?
Same as my house most of the time.
I get Larry Garlick and his family joining up front. Sir. Good to see you. Do you like to introduce them?
This is my wife Karen, and my second son Samuel, and my fourth son Peter.
Anything you'd like to share after 30 years?
Hey, it's been a great ride. I hope I can keep riding as long as I can.
Let you hold on to that.
So, Larry Garlick joined the city in 1990 as a programmer analyst. He developed and maintained several applications, including utility billing, payroll, and library systems. In 1999, he became the first lead software engineer for the city. In 2000, he moved positions to fully concentrate on the implementation of J.D. Edwards Enterprise System as an ERP software engineer. Larry managed J.D. Edwards' system and development of major custom applications, including budget, time entry, personal action approval, and training. Returning to lead software engineer in 2009, he managed several enterprise applications for the city, including J.D. Edwards', Full Court Enterprise. We're trying to decide how you pronounce that one.
Do we even need to?
A-sella.
A-sella. We would have pronounced it incorrectly.
Now replaced by City Works, CIS Infinity Utility Billing and Maintenance Connection. In 2017, Larry was promoted to IT Service Administrator overseeing budgeting, purchasing, contracts, project management, and IT Service Management and Business Analysts. Larry completed his Masters of Computer Information Systems at Denver University in 2002, received his Project Management Professional Certificate in 2009, Information Technology Infrastructure Library Foundation Certificate in 2011, and Certified Business Analyst Professional Certification in 2016. He received the Spirit Award in 2011 for his service to the city. Larry lives in Westminster with his wife Karen and three of his four boys. He still serves with Boy Scout Troop 87, where he was a scout master for four years, and through which all of his sons became Eagle Scouts. Be careful, I might have to steal him away from the city since I'm a 19-leader. You sound like a pretty...
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
This evening, I have the absolute privilege of recognizing Dan Striedelmeier with his 35 Years of Service Award. Well, would you take a moment and introduce your lovely family to everyone?
This is my wife, Ellen, and our son Trent, our son Scott, and our son-in-law, Jack Mallahan. Our daughter is doing medical school rotations in Kansas, so she can be here tonight.
You must be so kind. So, I want to read this first, and then I'll let you say a few words. Dan Striedelmeier began his career in 1985 as a Water Resource Analyst in the Water Resource Division of the Public Works and Utilities Department. Dan spent over 20 years in the Water Resource Division, and his work included water rights acquisitions, serving on canal company boards, and managing the preliminary design of the reclaimed water system. Dan has Westminster's project manager, or was, rather, Westminster's project manager for the Stanley Lake Dam renovation. He is currently a senior engineer in the Utilities Engineering Division and has managed the construction of over $100 million worth of utilities capital improvement projects. Dan served on various committees throughout his career and is currently mentoring one of the high school interns. Dan is a licensed professional engineer, which is no joke, that is a very difficult certification, has a master's degree in civil engineering from the University of Colorado and a master's degree from Indiana University. Dan and his wife Jill have three children. They all enjoy skiing, playing golf, tennis, and volleyball. I will say, the story of Westminster is the story of water, and I am so appreciative of all of the years of service you've given so that we can continually provide safe, dependable, quality drinking water to our residents. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
You know, I have managed a lot of interesting projects, and successful projects come with a lot of teamwork and support and cooperation, and I appreciate the support from my department and City Manager's Office, City Council, and my family.
Well, thank you so much for sharing them with us. Here, just your award and your pin. Wonderful, and why don't we cozy on in for a picture?
First of all, we'd like to thank all of those who were able to come tonight for the presentations, but we had a number of people who were not able to attend tonight. But most importantly, I'd only just thank the employees that have been with us all these years, but thank your families for allowing us to keep you here, and we look to, for most all of you, we look to have you here many years to come. We are still waiting to give out our 50th year check. We've never had one, but we got close a couple of times, and Doug Hall could be our first. Well, I'll give you a chance there, Doug. All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's move on through the presentations. Next item on the agenda is public comments. It's a period of up to five minutes for anyone to come forward for an item that is not scheduled for a public hearing. Since we have none tonight, all items are open. This is a period you have up to five minutes. The green light comes on when your time starts, yellow when you have one minute, red when your time is up. Remember, this is a one-way conversation from those who come to the podium, to the council. We are recording these. We will respond back accordingly. Our staff will. So, at this time, Mr. Terry. Mr. Work, you'll be next.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. My name is Brett Terry. I'm here with friends of Stanley Lake. Give you guys a quick update on restoring trailer boating to the Stanley Lake Facility. Many of us worked tireless hours trying to work with the city to get some sort of a system that we could use that would ensure that we had safe, no muscle-free, muscle-free water and a recreation system that belonged there. The city kind of picked early on a No Key Lock, which is a company in Salt Lake City that makes these pretty fancy GPS-enabled locks, and then took that process of vetting that company underneath their wing. Nobody helped the city ranger at all. I did call the ranger just the day after last week's council update, and I got some pretty interesting information. We kept getting reports back that the GPS system was given incorrect readings that were in the middle of the Caspian Sea, which seemed odd. Never saw them. We didn't vet this stuff ourselves on the citizen side of the tagging committee that was just being done by the rangers. Turned out, if you turn off your GPS services on the GPS-enabled cellphone that you're supposed to be testing this with, you might get a reading that 000 in the middle of the Caspian Sea, a known bug that the software company had that makes the lock, but certainly was nothing like inappropriate readings out of the locks. Okay, pretty disheartening, and when we called the company and talked to them ourselves, they've changed that since to have a different error message, all right? They were waiting on geofencing, provided zero input to No Key Lock from the time they brought up geofencing in August to the time they were hoping to have a software update in January. That software update came out, but since the city of Westminster didn't have any requirements in there for geofencing and exactly what that meant to the system, guess what wasn't in there? There's no geofencing in there specifically for Stanley Lake. There could have been. This is just another one of those examples where you're expecting someone who's a ranger to manage a complex information technology implementation of a fancy piece of gear like a GPS-enabled lock. I don't know how we got here. I know it could have been done better. I know that the city's got enough money that if they want trailer boating on that lake, it would happen. Hire somebody who knows what the heck they're doing, not a ranger, and direct them to get it done, and stuff happens. If you hire the ranger who happens to work for the water quality, non-vetoable persons' vote on whether or not to restore boating, that person is given a directive not to make it happen, not to make it happen, and I think that's been our problem. It's super frustrating. I spent a year of my life trying to make this thing work, bumping into walls silently all the time. I don't think the city ever had an intent to make it happen, and I think that's wrong. We have a resource up there that should be shared by many people, and it should be shared safely. There's no questioning the safety part of this. You know, if the city didn't want boating, which they didn't, that's why we put the temporary and now beyond temporary ban in place, we've been given nothing but lip service since then, and it's frankly not good. Tried to go in through the front door? Many of us poured hours and hours and hours into this. I think, knowing that the decision was already probably made, we probably could have saved some time, but it seems as though some of these knee-jerk decisions that the city makes, if some activism starts to happen, some changes in minds might be made. The boating community has tried to be quiet, has tried to do this thing the right way, and we've been given nothing but the Heisman pose the whole time. It's pretty frustrating. We're going to get active. You want to see some more boaters? You want to see some more boaters? We're fixing to see some more boaters. I think we'll make sure that that promise holds true. Many people are passionate about that lake and they have the right to be and they should be passionate about that lake. We just need to be heard and we want to make it happen from here. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Thanks again for having me. I'm Kevin Work with Friends of Stanley Lake, just kind of giving you guys an update from our last meeting. Brett pretty much hit everything on the nose there. It was pretty discouraging once we talked to No Key, like he said, on how a five-minute phone call was easily the solution that, you know, could have, your reason why we couldn't go on forward with our program was just a quick phone call with the company. We did get an email from Jason, a pretty short email, just simply saying that the boating program is annually reviewed once in the fall and nothing will be done until then. Again, the boaters are worried that that one time they meet about it, boaters won't have proper representation on what we've come up with, what's new, how we can do them, because what we haven't done in a year, they're definitely not going to be able to do in one meeting in the fall, whenever that may be. So we really want to just be heard or be present when that time comes and even now, so we can start, get that ball rolling, because we know it's going to take more than just a month or so to implement any solution. Again, a lot of feedback from the communities. We wouldn't really push the one boat, one lake and all the concerns that the city had about that. We believe we have addressed them all. We'll get a little more formal with submitting that. Some of those concerns were just, again, the amount of boats wouldn't be as many as you normally had. Boaters are okay with that, at least gets some people, 200 boats I believe, give or take, can be held in that storage unit. That money can be made up with raised costs. You would now not have to have a ranger. One of the big concerns Holly always had was no ranger at the dock. No one ever wanted to man the dock and do the tags. With one boat, one lake, you wouldn't need someone at the dock, you would just need people at the gate making sure no boats would leave. Also, No Key Lock could be integrated with one boat, one lake if boats needed gas. You could put the geofencing around just the gas stations or just the dealerships if big maintenance needed to be made. There's ways to get a boat off and keep it secured and the city would know exactly where that boat was 24/7. Again, giving the 100%, 100% of the time quota that we keep hearing, that would all be within check. Anything else with boat and one boat, one lake is, you know, we got, the city was worried about the liability they would have to take on by having the boats on their site 24/7, which again, you guys do now, and boaters are willing to sign liability waivers or change their insurance, so the city would not be liable if any damage would be concerned or any damage would happen to any boats, so that wouldn't be a concern. The solution is protecting your water. It's keeping the water safe. In fact, it would be more safe than the current system where people are sneaking on and using the lake elsewhere or bringing on their own paddle boards or canoes or such. So this would be a more secure system, and that's why we're really passionate and boaters are really kind of pushing for this, because they feel they haven't been heard up to this point and they don't want another year to go by without change or at least an open discussion with the city and the proper people who make these decisions, so we can help bring them on board with what we've come up with, so we can address their concerns that they still have, that they may not have, the hours of research that we do, so we can get somewhere. I believe that's all I have. Thank you guys for your time.
Is there anyone else in the audience who has not signed up that has an item they'd like to bring forward to council at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Report of city officials, Mr. Tripp.
Mayor and council, I'd like to congratulate the number of employees who received recognition today and likewise thank their families. I wanted to just comment very briefly about COVID-19 and that issue in our society today and in our community and provide reassurance to you. I've spoken with and provided information to you, council, but as a matter of the public record that, you know, we're really following in our city as the other cities are, the lead of the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control, and their work through the Colorado Department of Public Health and tri-county health in our area. We have an emergency management coordinator that is a part of our staff that is employed for the specific purpose, working under the fire chief to monitor these situations. I'm really comfortable with the work this group is doing, supported by a work group of employees that they're meeting with now regularly, to continue to monitor the websites and the information that's available on a statewide, national, statewide and a local basis. We'll keep you informed. We don't have any changes to our own operating procedures. We're looking at what the potentialities are in terms of disruptions to service of the city, and I can provide reassurance to the people in the city that we will continue to provide uninterrupted service. We've not had a report of the COVID-19 in our city at this point. I think it's very potential that that does happen and we'll be prepared to deal with that through our public safety personnel and to make sure that we continue to provide continuous important services to our community. So thank you for allowing me to make a few comments.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Any comments from council tonight? Mr. Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted a brief update. The mayor and I were, had the honor to attend the Retirement Party of Fire Lieutenant Joel Sherry on the 25th and honor him for the service that he's given to our city. And the interesting part about this is his service, like many others, will not end. He is going on to Adams 12 to teach a fire sciences class, a class that was developed by Lieutenant Nolan Bailey from the North Area Training Academy that Lieutenant Sherry worked with. So it was an outstanding evening and a great honor to be part of that. The other thing, there's a, happening this Saturday is a bit of a momentous occasion in that about 9:30 AM at the old Westminster High School, the Hidden Lake High School, the Westminster 710 Rotary will distribute its 10,000th computer to a Westminster student in need. It's quite an endeavor and it's taken several years to get that and wanted to recognize those people who run that part, the volunteers and the non-rotarians who work to get students and then other deserving nonprofits help with computers. Such a part of everyday life that most of us can't imagine not having a computer. This helps kids do their classwork that they need. And then, on a little bit of a lighter note, had an opportunity this afternoon to attend a basketball game at Mountain Range High School that the Westminster Police Department took on the Mountain Range High School Unified Basketball Team that's made up of members of both the boys, girls, and Special Olympian Teams. And so I want to give a special thanks and recognition to the SRO team that participate in this, Commander Lester, and who spent a great deal of time on the floor. He was trying to get charging calls, it just, the referees would have none of that. Sergeant Reed, Officers Neville, Buckner, Steele, Jacobson, Clark, and the Mountain Range SRO Gonzalez, who was chided the entire time by the students and the staff there. And so, and also Public Information Officer Sherry Spocky was there. If you want to ask your fellow officers about the score, you can. It was a unique scoring system. For some reason, our score kept going backwards. There was hope in the fourth quarter when one of our officers, Neville, hit a three-pointer, but that disappeared from the scoreboard later, so I'm not sure how that worked. But the students fully participated. It was a great event for all the kids there and it was a valiant effort by PD to go down 72 to 0. So I thank them for that great community service.
Ms. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to announce that the open state, I'm sorry, the Parks Recreation Libraries Open Space Board meets this Thursday at 6:00 PM right here in City Hall at the multipurpose room. A reminder that all boards and commissions are open to the public and you are encouraged to attend. This is your way to have a voice, and so I encourage you to be a participant in these meetings. Also, I wanted to recognize all the employees tonight that were recognized for their time and service. I think it's a great tribute to our city that we have people with such longevity. It speaks well of our organization and how much we care for one another, and I truly appreciate that. So congratulations to all those who were recognized tonight and thank you for your service. And then finally, I also wanted to recognize the Persian culture and wish them a Happy New Year. We are so fortunate to live in a community where we celebrate all cultures and recognize that everyone contributes highly to our city and to our community. And Iranian-Americans have been great contributors to the city of Westminster and to the United States. They have contributed music and art and been business owners, and I think it's just so important that we remember and we celebrate this new day, which is what No Ruse means. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you, everyone who showed up tonight and the Friends of Stanley Lake coming and advocating for your cause once again. It's always good to see you guys. I would like to share a handful of events that are coming up. You have not one, but two opportunities to go eat some good chili with the fire department. Tomorrow evening, there's the Red Chili Cook-Off at the Promenade from 6:00 to 8:00, and then next Wednesday, the 18th, the Green Chili Cook-Off at the Promenade. Both great events. The money that they raise goes to the burn fund. Good time, so I encourage you to go to that. Next, tomorrow night is a board for the inclusivity board, which starts at 6:00 here downstairs. And then lastly, I would encourage residents to participate in our last open house for the water rates. That's going to happen at the MAC at 6:00 down off the 72nd.
Other comments, council? All right, seeing none, let's move on. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. This is a group of routine matters to be acted on with a single motion and vote. We have reviewed these at the pre-meeting. No one asked for have this item removed, so at this point, I would open up the motion for approval of the consent agenda. Ms. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city council adopt the consent agenda, item 8A.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, if you would, please use your lights. Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the appointments and resignations. We have none tonight, so we'll move on to item 10A. This is resolution number five concerning participation with Foothills Animal Shelter. And Ms. Sykes.
Thank you. I move to adopt resolution number five consenting to participation by the Foothills Animal Shelter in the Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Sharing Agency.
Ms. Scully.
I, second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from council on resolution number five? Ms. Smith? Okay. No discussions, the roll call vote. Ms. Parker, if you would, please.
Mayor Agerson.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sykes.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
And the motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Next item on the agenda is item 10B. Ms. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move based on the recommendation of the city manager to find that the public interest will be best served by authorizing a negotiated contract for bond council services with Butler Snow LLP in an amount not to exceed $15,000 in connection with a loan agreement with the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority.
Ms. Sykes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any question by council on item 10B? Seeing none, it's a vote with your buttons, if you would, please. And that motion carries on a 7-0 vote. All right, members of council, that is the last of the items that we have for this portion of the agenda. We will go down now to item 12A, Miss Laney's business, before we go to the Wino Board. Ms. Smith, you said you had an item you wanted to bring up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I move for a discussion, and this is not related to our public comment tonight, but I've been reflecting for the past year on the process of decisions that were made against boating on Stanley Lake, and I've never contested that our water quality is of the utmost importance. In listening to all parties involved, we have this common thread here. The process on which we've gathered data and the process by which decisions were made is a point of contention for me, and I really believe that we can all do better together. My motion tonight specifically is in regards to our water quality and safety of preserving our most valuable natural resource. These past few months, we discussed at length the importance of upkeep on our infrastructure to prioritize the safety and quality of our water. And that said, we've hired many third parties to ensure that we are making the best decision possible on a variety of topics, and therefore I would like to make a motion that we ask staff to find an outside third party that would include security professionals from all backgrounds to review our findings from the hard work that the task force, the staff, the tagging committee, and Friends of Stanley Lake has conducted over the past year. I'd like to see no more than three to four options for us to discuss as a council by the end of April, and I don't believe that this is an unreasonable ask. And I ask for my support from my fellow colleagues. I truly believe collaborating and building a partnership among all will be the most vetted, smart solution we can provide, not only for Westminster but for our region.
I'd like to second that motion.
All right, hang on before we get too far with this. I want to turn to the city attorney. I know there's some discussion going on down at the end, so hang on a minute. Mr. Frankel.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Consulting with the clerk and having a non-agendized item now come up for a motion and a second, it would likely, you know, I think be an item that could be discussed at the roundtable discussion that's agendized for tonight, which would follow the exec session involving the economic development issue. If the request here really is to develop or assess if there's consensus for future steps, it would appear that the roundtable as an agendized item on tonight's council agenda might be the venue to have that discussion rather than a motion and a second on a non-agendized item in the public meeting at this time.
And that was my concern, that's why I was waiting on this, is that because this is not agendized, for us to take a motion on something that's not been agendized may not be a legal action that we can take. So Ms. Smith, I'm going to ask you to consider withdrawing your motion, put it on the...
I have a question before she considers that.
To go back and consider the fact that it is not an agendized item and asking us to vote on something that wasn't agendized or advertised to the public, I think is a concern, but I'll go back to Mr. Frankel. Is that still, am I stating this correctly?
Apologies, just having a discussion with the clerk again. Again, I would recommend that this item be potentially discussed among council members at the roundtable, because my understanding was that the point of the roundtable discussion was to assess whether there was consensus on council to pursue specific issues. I think that would be the venue that I would recommend this be pursued through.
All right, if you have a question, I'll turn to you at this point, Mr. Demott, and then I'll come back to you, Ms. Smith.
So my question is really because in the past, when asked if there was an unagendized item that we'd like to put forward, I was told that we could, and maybe this would be an adjustment to the motion, but I was told in the past that you were able to do that under this miscellaneous item in order to agendize an item, so opposed to actually voting on action, the vote that had come before the council.
Well, I think if my understanding of the roundtable is correct, my understanding was that it would be a forum for council to develop consensus, if it exists, to pursue future agendized actions.
And I get that and I understand that. I think one thing I would say is not everybody's things ended up on that roundtable discussion. Too, we don't have as much time on that roundtable as we previously want, would be my concern about that, but I guess the bigger question is, are you saying that this is not the proper path or that it would just be preferred and just preferred to do in the roundtable or we can't take this kind of action?
So one of the other reasons I'd recommend the roundtable conversation... So one of the other reasons I'd recommend the roundtable conversation would be that directing staff, per the terms of the charter, is really the role of the city manager. And I think that if council wants to develop policy initiatives and put them forward in an open meeting by way of their roundtable discussion, that could then be presented to the city manager, who would initiate the policy desires of the council.
Ms. Smith, do you have another follow-up question?
Yes. My understanding of Robert's rules is that you could bring a motion to the dais, and that's what I did tonight. So can you walk me through the process of that Robert's rule process of bringing motions to the dais?
So the, my recollection of the motion that was made was to direct staff on specific policy questions. And on tonight's agenda, certainly there is an opportunity for council to have a policy discussion in an open meeting. That would be my recommendation, so that you can have this conversation rather than attempting a vote that would direct staff on an issue that hasn't yet been the subject of an open meeting discussion.
Because I opened my motion with an item for discussion of suggesting that we would direct staff. So am I able to have a discussion with my fellow colleagues as far as what the motion looks like to bring it to the roundtable? Because I'm concerned that this item seems to be circling when we get to the roundtable, and it never becomes a discussion. So that's why I'm here on the dais, trying to formalize it.
So I'm not aware of any impediments discussing this at your roundtable? I think absolutely that the point of the roundtable, as I understand it, was to facilitate open discussion on policy issues. That that would, I think, be one of the policy issues that you could raise with your colleagues.
Okay. And so my understanding from you is that we can, we as counselors and mayor can never bring a motion to the table to be voted on per Robert's, per Robert's rules? Is that what I understand?
So my advice would be to agendize items so that the public has notice that these types of motions are coming. Not having this as an agendized item is a concern. So I would recommend that we agendize these types of policy items wherever we can ahead of time for the open meetings law.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think I'm back to the same question. I think you're trying, if I understand what your intent is here, Ms. Smith, you're intending to try to get this on the roundtable discussion? And I think everybody put in a prioritized list of what they want, of what priority, and the staff is prepared to go with those that rank the highest by vote of the council members. Am I correct on that?
That is, oh, sorry. That was, that is correct, Mr. Mayor, but there's nothing that would limit your ability to add to that list as you desire throughout your open table discussion. Staff limited to four topics, anticipating that they could be fairly meaty discussions, and just being conscious of your 10:30 stop time. But if council has the ability to continue discussions or has the desire to continue discussions, there's nothing that would prohibit you from discussing other items.
Okay. Ms. Sykes, you have a comment?
I think I'll reserve it for the roundtable discussion.
All right. Mr. Demott, do you have another question?
I have a, I guess, an amendment question. If, my recommendation would be to amend the counselor's motion to recommend what she's suggesting directing the city manager opposed to staff and having that opposed to taking an action, to have it agendized in the future meeting. I don't know if I would do that, but I would say no more than a month away.
You need a second. You need a second first, and then you need both those first two to accept that.
Say my comments, then.
So the, we have a proposed amendment to the original motion, which does not have a second yet.
So then do I need to withdraw? Mine?
I'll, I'll, I'll second the amendment.
If you agree to the amendment.
Then, Ms. Smith, you must agree to the amendment.
Agree.
And Mr. Seymour, you must also agree to the amendment, even though you seconded the motion.
I agree to the amendment.
All right. So the motion currently is to put this forward as a item to be agendized for study by city council at a meeting as soon as possible, but hopefully no longer than a month away. As I understand it, that's the current motion. Am I correct, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Seymour, you're okay with that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So before I call for a vote on the motion, let me check to see who else has comments. Ms. Scully, you have a comment? I'll come back to you first.
Actually, I have a question.
Yes.
So it was my understanding that we would have more than one discussion roundtable sort of session, and that this item was actually on our second roundtable discussion. Am I incorrect?
We have not, at this time, agendized the next one, but we did intend to continue rolling items that had been put forward to continue to gauge interest on discussion for those at a future time.
Was this item on the list for futures?
This was on the list for this time. It was not prioritized in the top four.
Okay. But it is on the list for futures.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Ms. Smith, you have another comment?
No, sir.
All right. Ms. Sykes?
Yes. So I am going to, instead of reserving my comment for the roundtable, I will say it now. I find this request somewhat frustrating. First off, because it violates council protocols. We do have a rule of no surprises, and so typically, if someone was going to request this, they would notify all of council. It would give us enough time to deliberate and to think. Secondly, I think it violates our duty to our residents to allow them to weigh in. And so that's the whole point of having something agendized, is so that our residents are given notice, and those who are concerned have time to consider it and have time to attend. So I do appreciate the amendments from Counselor Demott. I guess I feel like this is poor policymaking to make a motion from the dais, particularly on an issue that is so critical to the public health and well-being of our residents. I feel that this is additionally trying to jump the queue. This is not the first time that we've heard that there is a desire to have this conversation, and members of council chose to not prioritize this. By the voting, it was a lower-tier priority. So I guess I will not be in support of it. I'm in support of talking about it at the next roundtable, but I am not in support of this vote tonight.
Ms. Smith, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With all due respect, Mayor Protem, this was the exact words that I used in my email to all of council, so it was not a surprise as far as what I was going to bring forward to, to staff or to council. This, I can send, resend what I had said in my email, but this shouldn't have been a surprise to staff and/or council.
Clarify, it is a surprise to me that it is coming as a motion from the dais tonight, as we all, the process that we had agreed to were the roundtables where it was brought forward, and it was not prioritized by your colleagues.
Mr. Demott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a couple of comments about why I think this is important, that we don't sit on this any longer. And, and the reasons are, is I think it's really security and safety, and I've brought this up a number of times that this issue has been raised. I have got more concerns about the rest of the lake beyond trailer boating, to the point where frankly, I feel like trailer boating may be less of a risk than some of the other risks that we have. I know that it's been stated that things like paddleboards and kayaks are safer because we can 100% visually inspect them, but that's only if we see them. I can't tell you how often I have residents, mostly boaters, come to me and tell me that they have seen people go on, or homeowners who have seen people from the west side of the lake be able to walk onto the lake with their paddleboards. So really, my big concern is that we haven't holistically vetted this problem, and I really do think that it's time that we start looking at a third party to actually come in, look at the whole lake, the whole security problems that we have, and actually come up with solutions for all these different facets of the problem. Because I do think that the number-one priority of this council should be the safety of that drinking water, not just for our own city, but for our partners that have their drinking water there. So I totally understand Mayor Protem Sykes' frustration and concern about protocol. However, I don't feel that this has been given the full priority that it needs.
Ms. Scully.
So I'm basically going to echo what Mayor Protem Sykes said, because I agree that this was a bit of a surprise. I understand that it was presented in an email that this would like to be a desired topic of discussion, but I didn't see this coming in a public, open forum meeting. I thought this would be something we would discuss in the roundtables. I saw it on the agenda coming forward. So I will not be in favor of voting to have this as a vote tonight either.
Mr. Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, my concerns about the roundtable process in itself is, is brought forward because we had a great discussion a couple of months ago during a study session to build working consensus on an item, and we all agreed that it was a great process. It was a great, open process where we could all discuss and really dig into an item that sometimes we don't have the time or ability to do. So I was all in favor of this, but I don't think there was an intention to make the roundtable process or to prioritize that other than those are the talking points that we would like to get to and have that circumvent more details that we needed to get into as a deep dive that had time issues associated with it. So I think we're, we're using the roundtable discussion part as a bit of a diversion from the main point, because I know there's all kinds of issues that we're going to have to come up with and discuss that we won't have time to get to on the roundtable. So that's my thought on that.
Ms. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm also deeply concerned that this is not being publicized to the public and giving them, giving them a chance to come and have public opinion and voice talk to us. So I'm concerned. I mean, I feel like we're, we're doing this behind a door or something. We should be doing this in the public. We should have this announced. It should be a conversation with the public. We should listen to those public comments that we also value. And, and that's the procedure that we have agreed upon as a council that we would do. That's our process, so.
Thank you, Counselor Scully, for those thoughts. I do believe that we have the opportunity here, as the amendment was put forth, this was no, not a final decision, it was just a process, a process that we can get everyone involved in, including security experts. So I think this is just a small part of the process, in no way an end to the, to the process, just the beginning.
Mr. Demott.
Thank you. To follow up on what Counselor Seymour just said, that was part of the reason for my amendment was to bring in that public piece, so that it could be agendized and the public could be fully made aware and participate in the process.
All right, I'm going to ask the council, give me a second. year, we had an IGA with our storage parkers on the lake that expired. We currently have no IGA. That is in negotiations at this time between the storage partners. But no matter what we discuss or we want to do, unless we have an agreement with our partners, nothing is going to happen on that lake. So until that discussion is brought back to us from the staff, with the partners and what they're going to recommend, we have no legal authority to do anything. So I would caution you about trying to put something together that says we want to try to take some action, whether it's just a discussion or anything else, because we don't know that we're going to have the authority to do anything when that IGA comes back to us. This may be premature. It may not be within our control. And I understand the desire to make something happen, but we need our storage partners, meaning the other municipalities, to agree to a IGA of some sort. But since our staff is in negotiation from the attorney, city attorney's office with their counterparts, I'm reluctant to put this on a public agenda, because we don't know what we can discuss and what we can't. Now with that in mind, Demott, you have another question?
Yeah, point of clarification, the current IGA, I thought, was we voted to extend it a year.
Mm-hmm. But without the voting.
Okay. Well, you had meant, you said that there wasn't an IGA, so that was my point of clarification.
We, we voted to.
Correct. There's a one-year extension.
There's a one-year extension without the voting, which we still have in place.
The original 25-year IGA ended in November. The members to the IGA voted to extend for one year while we renegotiate a new agreement, which would be potentially another 25-year agreement, if possible.
Like I said, my clarification is that you're absolutely correct. We have an extension, but that extension does not include any kind of voting on the lake.
And, and that's fair, and I think that as a, I'll just remind you that my, my reason for wanting this is a full look of security by an outside group, and that isn't inclusive to voting, it's the whole thing. So I totally think that that's a relevant point, and I hope in negotiations through the IGA that we're having these whole discussions with that stakeholder.
All right. I'm going to wrap up comments with one more opportunity for anybody who has any comments, then I'm going to go ahead and call the question. Right now, we have a motion before us to agendize an item for discussion as defined by the motion and amended, for this to be put on within a month. And get that here for us to discuss, as I'm trying to paraphrase all the words, but we'll clean up the language. So at this point, I'm going to ask for a, Michelle, if you can, I want you to do a roll call vote for this one, so I have a record of it, please.
Mr. Mayor, if we might, we're having a little bit of an issue getting clarity on the exact motion. The original motion, as we understood it from Counselor Smith, was to direct staff to hire a third party and have a discussion about security and issues around boating on Stanley Lake. To clarify, we believe the amendment stated to direct the city manager, to direct staff, to agendize a discussion around security issues on Stanley Lake. Is that accurate?
I think it was to hire the third party to discuss those issues. To talk to staff about hiring a third party to basically have that conversation.
So the agendized portion is to agendize an action approving the hiring of a third party? We're not clear exactly what we're directing staff to do?
I think we're looking at, and I don't want to speak for Counselor Demott, I, in my original ask, I would like the city my original ask, I would like the city manager, I didn't say that in my motion, but to direct staff to look at researching possible of three to four vendors that could provide information on third-party background as far as what we've done as staff on the tagging committee and Friends of Stanley Lake, and look at reviewing that for the security purposes of the lake.
And the amendment then changed that how?
It, it changed to have it agendized opposed to passing it tonight, and it changed to have the, the direction be that the city manager do it, as, as we're not the ones who direct staff. We direct the city manager to direct staff.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Do we have one? We think we have a clear motion.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Then I'm gonna again ask the city clerk to do this as a roll call vote.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sykes?
No.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
No.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
No.
Mayor Agerson?
No.
Therefore, the motion dies on a 4-3 vote. Let me, let me be clear. We will be discussing this, but because of the outstanding issues we have with these IGA negotiations, I think this is very premature, and we need to wait till that is resolved. I think that negotiation, Dave, does also include your concern about security at the lake, or it should be as part of that IGA. With that motion failing, we will move on to the next item, which will be the Westminster Economic Development Authority Board meeting. We are now reconvening under the same roll call as the Westminster Economic Development Authority under a special meeting. The roll will stand as called previously. First item on the agenda is item 2A. Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the Westminster Economic Development Authority approve the minutes of the January 27th, 2020, as presented.
Ms. Scully.
I second.
Motion and a second has been accepted. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none? We'll move on. Next item on the agenda for the veto is item 3A, authorization for the executive director to enter into a, an agreement for legal support. Ms. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the executive director to enter into an agreement with Murray Dalberry and Renad LLP for work related to the downtown Westminster project and general urban renewal and eminent domain matters in an amount not to exceed $90,000.
Mr. Seymour.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, so any discussion on item 3A? Seeing none, this is a vote with your likes, please. And the motion carries on a 7-0 vote. That concludes the business of the Westminster Economic Development Authority. Therefore, that meeting is adjourned. For the public notice, we have three items on the post-meeting agenda. The first will be a public-private partnership with downtown Westminster District Energy Update that will be open to the public. Upon conclusion of that presentation, we will adjourn into a executive session for a possible sale of real property interest at 104th and Westminster Boulevard. Once that item is done, we will come back into public session for the city council study session roundtable. At this point, for the purpose of a short break, we will take a 10-minute break, and we will reconvene in the council boardroom at 8:20. We are adjourned.